I don't know if it's slated for it or not. Excellent. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, residents of Litchfield, and welcome to the November eighteenth, I'm sorry, October eighteenth, I'm kidding myself, October eighteenth, two thousand seventeen school board meeting. Like to begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you at home that are just joining us, catching up on us, we were in non-public to begin with, and I apologize for going a little longer than we had anticipated. So, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
Uh, do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So we have a summary of non-public actions from September twenty, two thousand seventeen, and there was no non-public actions. We have no presentation, recognition, correspondence? I believe we have any either. So we'll bring us right to superintendent's comments.
Uh, we, um, October one, as you know, we take a look at enrollments, and we try to put that together. Uh, we do not have the projected enrollments. We have contacted New Hampshire School Board Association. They have indicated to us that they are no longer providing the projected enrollments. So we contacted, uh, the person who's done the projected enrollments, uh, in the past, and we will be getting, uh, the same kind of projected enrollments that you've had, uh, from that person. However, um, in thinking about it, my recommendation would be that you stay with the NESDEC that we started last year and get those also so that you'll have some continuity or continuous kinds of data. So we will have the, uh, individual would be getting that data together for us, I believe, in about a week to two weeks, and we'll also get the NESDEC data to you and take a look at it. Just the raw data that we have without really, um, any analysis of last year and this year, uh, the things that are clear is that the, uh, reduction in population, um, in the preca- and let's just say first grade through sixth grade is pretty much along the lines that we anticipated. And if you project the cohorts that we currently have, uh, pretty clearly, as we have anticipated, the middle school will see a reduction in students over the next couple of years. And even the high school next year, we have a hundred and thirty kids graduating from the high school this year, and we only have a hundred and nine eighth graders. And if you look at the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, we do have a drop-off of twelve to fourteen kids. So if that holds true, our incoming freshman class will probably be under one hundred. So we could have easily thirty fewer children in our high school next year than this year because of the, uh, cohort size and the normal, uh, number of children that are in the eighth grade who choose to go elsewhere. Um, the two things that I would note is, as I've stated, uh, the ninth grade enrollment, uh, we're twelve to fourteen students below our projecting, and I think we really have to take a look at what's accounting for that and see if we can't, um, try to figure out how do we attract, uh, more of our current eighth grade cohort into the ninth grade in coming years. The fifth grade, we always have a few kids that we lose between fourth and fifth grade, four or five kids, but the, uh, the, the transition, uh, in ninth, eighth grade to ninth grade is a little bit, uh, concerning. Um, the class size policy, the summary data there, kindergarten through grade three, it's twenty, grades four and five, et cetera, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-five. Uh, so this is the information we have. Uh, just based on this information, uh, we clearly would anticipate, uh, as we've stated before, that, uh, we will have some reduction in, uh, teaching positions in the elementary school and the middle school in the coming year. But with the full-day kindergarten coming online, we anticipate that we would, uh, use those teaching positions to fill the full-day kindergarten positions that we will be needing. Uh, that's about what I had to say about the current enrollment report, and certainly as soon as we get the projections, uh, we will give you a little bit more thorough analysis of what the projections look like.
So, um, can we task each school, um, LMS for the fourth to fifth graders, or GMS for the fourth to fifth graders, and LMS for the eighth graders to high school, or whatever combination, to actually reach out to the parents of those students and have a conversation of why the decisions were made?
Yeah.
To go in a different direction?
Yeah, I, 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 we certainly can. Every, uh, school, the system I have been in, there are always some parents who choose to send their kids to a private school, a private religious organization, or a private, uh, nonreligious organization, or, uh, sometimes they choose other kinds of avenues, a charter school. Uh, but this number is a little bit higher than what I'm comfortable with, so let's see if we can't get some information from some parents about exactly what was motivating them. It may strictly be, um, a personal decision in their family, or maybe something that would inform us about how we can better offer educational programs to high school. Absolutely, we can take care of that.
Can we set a date of, um, on our calendar in November?
Sure.
For a meeting for, our third meeting in November where, um, we expect it would have to be non-public, but that we can expect?
Uh, if you give us about a-
Some feedback on that, gives us a month?
Give us about a month. I think we'd be able to come back to you folks with some feedback on that, as best we can get it. But let's, let's give us a month, and we'll come back at the, um, towards the end of November and, uh, give you a report on that.
Thank you.
All right. So that'll bring us to community forum.
Actually, we have some local town meetings, meetings all around the-
Oh, yeah. We, there is another issue that's come to some attention over the last several days, and that is that we were hopeful of being able to have our, uh, budget hearing at the town hall on Saturday, and also have school board meetings there, uh, during the remainder of the year. However, there seems to be some, uh, challenging, uh, issues in terms of, uh, for Saturday, in terms of the, uh, tables that would be needed and the, uh, hookups for electronics and things like that. And then to have the meetings for the school board, at least through this current year until January, there are some conflicts that have to be resolved. So I think that my recommendation at this point would be to have our, uh, budget committee hearing here, um, and, uh, to continue having the school board meetings here with the hope that we would be able to migrate to the town hall after the first of the year. That would appear to be the best course. I don't have any information from the budget committee as to whether they're going to hold their committee meetings here or at the town hall, because they were also looking to try to hold their meetings there, and I, I can't comment on that, 'cause I have not talked to Cindy, but I'm sure we'll hear from her soon. And then if we, when we have the budget committee hearings, we've also had discussions internally about the superintendent's idea of doing it by site, and there's a little apprehension about doing it by site in terms of, uh, the directors, uh, all of the directors would have to be here the whole day, and, uh, they're concerned that you don't get a real clear picture of the budget. They've requested that we postpone a site-based budget presentation until next year, and that they would come in, pretty much as we have done traditionally, uh, one, uh, director or one principal at a time. The director's giving us an overview of the district, and the principal's talking about their budget and their building, and Cory, of course, would, Cory and I would kick it off, uh, myself with the, uh, major, uh, educational innovations that we want to do, what are our priorities, and then Cory would give you the overall picture of the budget, the overall, uh, major changes in the budget, and how it compares to last year's budget and percentage, uh, increases or decreases in specific areas of the budget. So I, uh, I'm a little, um, well, antsy about not being able to do it by site, but I understand where my principals and directors are, and I think we should go ahead and kind of do it the way we've done it previously for this year.
Can I also, um, make a suggestion that, uh, if we are gonna move to the town, I don't believe they have a whiteboard to plug in, and we, a lot of times, we have presentations that, uh, um, the school might want to put a whiteboard-
Correct.
-in that room for, um, uh, for anybody, for their use as a, as select man stuff.
They have a monitor, like a screen TV that you can plug into.
They do have a big monitor. I know we were over there one day, but they, they do not have a whiteboard.
Right, but I'm sure they can just use your laptop.
You can use a projector, can't you?
Yeah. That's technology, and that's not my area of expertise. I'll leave that to-
Corey, I'll leave, you'd work that out with the town, but, you know.
So, well, the, I'm just updating Facebook, the budget work session will be here?
Yes.
That would be my recommendation at this point in time.
Do we need to go on?
Unless the board feels differently, and of course, we work for the board, so if the board feels differently, we understand. We'll do as directed.
Like I said, my, my biggest thing was that for the public at home.
Yeah.
It, it's a lot better being there because of acoustics and sound, and, so hopefully we can get there sooner than later.
Agreed. I believe that was the other thing that Michelle kicked me in the leg to make sure I told you about.
She did, yeah.
The bruise on my right knee is getting bigger, Michelle.
I'm not that bad, am I? Am I?
No. It's the right foot, actually.
So that brings the community forum.
My name is Robin Corbiel. Today, I am a unified arts teacher from LMS, um, and just basically coming to invite all of you to our annual Unified Arts Team Veterans Day breakfast and ceremony that happens. We have some invitations that the kids created, um, as they do every year for all of you. We make a really good breakfast.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna share one with Nancy and Devin. You see them in the office? I don't know if there's any Alexi Krupika, uh, on administrative staff that might want to join us?
Okay, um, I'm not sure if you want to leave one, and I'll put it in the, uh-
Well, there's a couple extras there.
Okay.
Yep.
They're just kind of cool. Um, Unified Arts Team takes us very seriously. We want to recognize the veterans in the community. We also want to invite any community member who happens to be a veteran to join us. It is on Thursday, November ninth. Um, the breakfast starts at seven AM, and like I said, we make a pretty amazing, Mrs. Rooney makes, or specialty there. Um, and then we have a ceremony at seven forty-five in our gymnasium, so anybody can come. Um, we do ask that people RSVP by November third if you're gonna attend the breakfast, just so that we can make sure that we have enough for everyone. Um, and that is to the Litchfield Middle School office, and that is four-two-four-two-one-three-three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and the pictures were made by the seventh grade.
Great stuff.
School board comments? Anyone?
Oh, did you want to do committees now, or?
There's a place for-
Okay.
All right, now bring us to approval of minutes, public minutes from October fourth, two thousand seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Abstain. Abstain.
Tina. Abstain.
I knew you were gonna do that sooner or later.
Sorry. I'm not on my game.
That's all right. We have budget transfers to approve?
Budget transfers?
Yes. Did I not post them?
Yeah, we have a list of approved budget transfers here.
It's just a consent agenda.
There's a page and a quarter on the consent agenda. Certainly, if you have any questions, a BA can answer them.
Normally, those funds transfers are very small. However, I see large transfers of thirty-two thousand, forty-eight thousand.
Those are the ones to-
Twenty-two thousand.
Good reallocations. There was, uh, there was a line that was in the red due to the spend ahead last year for technology. So that accounts for it.
Okay.
Moving money back in to bring those lines up to date.
Just normally, it's-
Yep.
You know, a couple thousand dollars here and there, and I mean, you, you're moving some big, move money around right here, so.
There's no sheriff in charge of the money.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Yeah. It's actually probably nice to see it moving and not being in the red, you know?
I'll make a motion to accept the budget transfers.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five-zero-zero. Next will bring us to the BA report.
So I had provided, uh, a monthly memo with updates on it regarding the tax rate, budget preparation, and the FY eighteen financials. I'll talk a little bit about the financials that I provided, which were, uh, comparative financial statements as of today. Um, I put it in a format that looks very much like how our audited report would look like at the, at year-end, taking into account, um, accounts, uh, open purchase orders as well as what we've spent to date to kind of get an idea of where fund balance would look. And I'll use this, um, throughout the year to track, state of the fund balance, and as we get towards year-end, what we're gonna have left towards year-end. It also has, um, expenditure reports, and this is where your, your budget transfers, where you're not gonna see the large, um, accounts and functions in the red anymore. There's a couple smaller ones that have negative balances at the end. I believe those are related to salary and insurance items. Um, that I'll look into transferring to make the appropriate transfers there as well, bring those lines whole. From there, um, as Jim had mentioned, we're gonna do the budget presentations, a lot like we've done in the past by department. Um, I will do the district as a whole. I did provide a summary of what the budget looks like, original requested, along with, uh, what superintendent's reviewed budget looks like so far, and how much we're, what that increase looks like, if anyone has any questions on that. The budget books have been provided tonight for your review ahead of Saturday, and if anyone has any questions ahead of Saturday, feel free to, to let me know. And also, just to keep the board up to date, the tax rate was officially set. Um, the tax rate for the town is twenty-two forty-nine. The school portion was up five percent this year to a rate of fourteen sixty-six. That is actually a little bit less than what was projected due to the amount that we returned to reduce taxes, um, from year-end fund balance. And that's, that's what I got for tonight. Do you guys have any questions for me?
So anybody have any questions in reference to the budget right now? You'll get off easy tonight, Cory.
What's that?
You'll get off easy tonight.
That's all right.
Let me share a budget, someone'll budget it out after my time being heard. Karen would like to know if she could post that budget.
Did you do one meeting? Oh, three?
Make sure not to put a header on it too, like it's being moved. I know you're already gonna do that, but along with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you were in the down part.
Oh, yeah. Everything.
They do their budgets, they, they, they just-
You have something on transportation, Cory?
Yeah, we had the bus counts. Um, seem pretty consistent. In terms of transportation right now, no news is good news. I haven't heard anything. Um, in terms of complaints in regards to our regular ed transportation, things seem to be running fairly smooth. I've heard a couple things in regards to vocational transportation and special ed transportation, um, what's we're dealing with as those, as those arise, so.
My understanding, we, we have an issue with one bus at LMS that's, just gets there or gets a late.
Yeah, um, and I do know there's been a, a sub-driver on that bus consistently. We are, uh, Michelle and myself have been looking at that route in particular to see if there's any changes that need to be made.
Is that bus three?
Bus six.
Six, oh, that's my son's bus.
It's not my bus this year, I'm not sure.
Is that the bus that picks up on, uh, I go over by Dara Pond and then ends up by Brian's house to pick up?
We got beat up last year.
Bus six is, uh, they start at, for GMS, they start at Ren, Ren as in keg, down to Charles Bancroft. So we're taking a look at it.
The one thing that, um, I, I think struck me in the whole bus count was the high school bus count, and, uh, bus five and six counts are extremely low.
Yeah.
And, you know, that was one thing that struck me, and I don't know where we are contractually, or if there's any possibility of reorganizing high school and keeping it within a reasonable bus travel time. But it seems to me that, um, we might want to watch that over the course of the year and, um, see what we can do to perhaps tighten that up a little bit.
But, but you see, I, I think the, the issue is, the buses for the high school have to be done by six fifty, six fifty-five. The ones that, the routes that are closer to the school need six fifty-five, you know, start their routes close to G, CHS. But the ones that are, uh, north of town, they have to be out of here by six fifty, just to get to north of town by six fifty-five, seven o'clock to start picking up, because most of those routes are thirty-minute, thirty-minute routes. So it's, you know, it's not the students, it's getting them picked up, even, you know, and they're dropping off here, they're, yeah, thirty-five minutes before school. You know, so.
That's, I mean, that's why my son doesn't take the bus. He doesn't need to be here forty minutes early. Good lord. Could barely get him out of bed as it is. But they are really long.
No, and, and, you know, you know, it's my favorite topic, so I got a few of them, but, you know, this one is, the school, the start times of the schools is just ridiculous.
But some of the kids sit on the buses at the school for fifteen minutes. They sit in the last part, and I-
Well, Kylie, my daughter's bus gets there. They're, well, not recently, but normally they're twenty, twenty-five after, so she's ten minutes on the, be five or ten minutes on the bus. And there's other students that are the same way at LMS because, uh, you know, they're dropping off at the high school, then they have the closest routes here. So I would imagine, it'd be interesting to find out if the routes that are having issues are the ones that have to travel the furthest from CHS to start their route to then get back to Campbell High School.
My kids are on the bus that does Corning, so that's probably as far north as they go, and they pick up my street, Natticoop, on the way back, and they're the last group. So that's a haul.
Well, unfortunately, as far as start times, that's something we can negotiate in another year. But unfortunately, right now, we're stuck with that. Uh, I would strongly suggest that we start high school around nine o'clock. Both going to it.
Hey, a lot of people-
My, my brother and sister were in Virginia. They went to school at nine o'clock.
That would resolve all our problems.
It's, Virginia's school started at seven-thirty.
Then they wouldn't be able to do extracurricular activities.
Sure they would.
Or they would, before school?
Of course they would.
We have schools that come here that-
Nobody, we just play bow.
No, we have kids, we have kids, we have kids that come, that schools that come here. The events don't start till four-thirty. So I mean, you know.
It works.
You know, it works out. It's just different.
Discuss that another year or so.
Changing of windows. After March.
Yeah.
Now bring us to old and unfinished business. We got a couple of policies.
Miss committee reports.
Oh, my god. Did I miss?
Committee reports. Did I not put them on here?
I see.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you've- All right, well, I'm, you know, I'm Spence, doing budget for you guys.
I'll bring us to committee reports. It's right before old or unfinished business.
You wanna go first?
You want me to go for it, for the budget committee? It was review of the police this week, um, cemeteries. I know more about this town than I, all of you together, I think, at this point. So, did you?
Brian has a great life, that's why we're watching.
Well, you gotta know what to expect from the budget committee.
You're just watching your wife.
Uh, no, no, I, I was, I was, no. I think the thing I took out of that budget meeting the, the most, so just be ready as far as for the school, that Kerry Douglas made a suggestion that we put on a Warren article, salt and sand, the additional couple thousand dollars that they want.
So noted.
On a Warren article?
Yep.
But you proved kindergarten, huh?
If it fails, we can't spend any money on salt and sand. That's brilliant. I don't think I want to go to the next budget.
I'm gonna be sick that day.
Done my time.
Thank you for covering it, Warren. I appreciate it.
It was, it was different. There was a very tight budget this year because of the fire hydrants.
Oh, fire hydrants?
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand dollars, huh?
Half a million.
Oh, it's going up to half a million?
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the new fire hydrants.
That's really nice, you know, we get free fire hydrants, but then we have to pay for them.
Dude, I had to pay for them for fifteen years, so I'm glad you guys are sharing the wealth now. I don't understand it. It was, you know, it was, it was fifteen dollars a month for a fire hydrant at my house, so I had to pay eighteen hundred dol-, eighteen hun-, eight hundred and eighty bucks a year. I just don't understand how it morphs into a half a million dollars. Are there that many fire hydrants in the town that-
There are now. Impenna Truck takes care of each and every one, and we have over a hundred streetlights.
Well, they took care of them anyway.
They would not be changing the light bulbs. That was another discussion.
No light bulb changes?
They want, they're changing the light bulbs to the, um, desert ones like Manchester there.
We were talking about that for a couple of years.
Yeah, it'll be darker.
I didn't even know the worst street lights.
Well, the good news is with more fire hydrants, you need less fire trucks because the water's there.
I think you need to be at the meeting when they're discussing the fire budget. What do you think? Anyway, on, on a different note, we did have a, a Capitol Building Committee meeting, and, uh, we did begin the process. We presented the, uh, Matrix, thank you Cory, that he put together with, um, then he took out the bright yellow and, um, but it was, it was very good. It was, it was there. We, um, uh, we went through it. Uh, we had some discussion. We determined that, uh, between the ones and the twos, we had, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars of life safety type projects to do, and, um, five and a half million dollars of other projects to do. And, uh, um, I, I will say that, uh, there was a consensus out of the group, um, uh, that, uh, do a bond and do it all at one time. So, uh, we're meeting again next week on Tuesday, uh, but I don't know how much for-
Do a bond and do?
Do what?
Everything.
The five and a half million dollars?
All six and a half million dollars.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come down to six million, because I mean, that's one of the things we talked about, is like-
Isn't that putting a Band-Aid on the-
It's the whole, Band-Aid was six-point-six million dollars, so fixing the whole thing at one time.
Like when you, it's broken down in, in like three different categories. Number one is priority, number two is like almost priority, and three is like you can wait. But if you're doing like some of the ones and twos, you can incorporate the threes into it at the same time.
I had sent, uh, yesterday, I'd sent you an email regarding, there's a, a state infrastructure fund, where the state has allocated money from their budget surplus, about nineteen million dollars, that they will provide to projects, safety projects, uh, building code projects, stuff like that. I think it would be interesting to take a look through that list of projects again and see if there's anything on that list that maybe we could put an application out to the state and see if we could get some funding that way first, before we look to, to going into a long-term debt situation.
Well, I think you should send that out to, um, the committee.
Yep.
With, you know, briefly, um, uh, with a brief paragraph of, of explaining what it is, and, um, encourage them to do any homework that they would like to do. Um, and they may come across some stuff before we come across it. And, uh, but yeah, I mean, I mean, if we could find some, some money from the state, by all means, that would be.
And I think, was the deadline, I think the deadline is May for application, and then, so that would give us an opportunity to get a couple RFPs out, to get some solid quotes to make sure our application is, uh, is thorough.
Is that gonna be divided the same way that they do other, I can't remember, other funding, like as far as for schools, so like a Manchester, Nashville would get like a bigger percentage available, or the project coming in?
You would apply for the project that you were looking to do, and if you get awarded, you get the money for that project, is the way that, that I understand it.
As, as a chair, who's been around New Hampshire for a while, dealing with funding, uh, my, my, uh, my feeling is that there probably would be some kind of earmarked money for places by population density.
Well, there, there is two segments of that money that's already been earmarked. I think it's like, twelve, what, like six million dollars, or, I think it's more than that, for two different things.
Yep.
So I think it only, it's, which cuts it's-
There were three types of projects that it was, it's set out to do. I think it's network infrastructure, life safety, and what, there was a third, I can't remember.
Security.
Security.
Security, that's it.
But I, but I think the, uh, yeah, the technology part of it, as far as infrastructure, that's, those are monies that are already gonna be taken from that part. But I thought it was for the state.
What's that?
I thought it was for the state, though.
For the state to use it?
Yes. That's what I thought, so I thought it looked like twelve million.
I read, dude, that that wasn't, that was for the community. That was going, the state wasn't, state's the one offering the money out. They wouldn't then take it back for their own project.
No, no, not for their own projects, but I didn't think it was like specifically as far as schools to be able to go after that part of the money.
No, I think you can apply for any, any one of those categories of project.
And I misunderstood that. So they broke it into three categories, that's what you apply for. Got it.
But if you can, you know, include, I think, include the school board in that distribution because that way they, everybody's, has, has that. But, um, so, um, there's a lot of information you had to digest in a very short period of time. So we're hoping that, um, when we meet on the twenty-third or twenty-fourth, um, on, on Tuesday, that we'll have a better direction and stuff, but, um, I mean, I think that, um, the thought process was to, um, put it all together into an RFP as much as we can, and send it out for proposals back, so that, um, we would be in a position in March. And the, um, other consensus was not to do it as a, a, do it as a warrant article, but do it as a bond, so that it was, um, paid off ten to fifteen years out, because low interest, you know, money is relatively inexpensive right now. And, uh, that would allow the, um, the cost of this to be spread out of a more lengthy time, and not, you know, if, if you did it over, um, you know, did it over ten years, you're, if you borrowed six million dollars, you would have to pay back six hundred thousand dollars plus four percent interest or whatever it was, um, so you calculate that, you know, fifty thousand dollars a month, you know, you drill it down to the houses and stuff. It's not as, um, it's not as painful in, in the, in the, in the taxes as it would be if you got a warrant article and you went and you got all six million dollars at one time. Um, and, uh, and then the, the other idea was that we thought that if we started the projects in the summer, next summer, um, that between the summer, Thanksgiving, Christmas, February, April, and then the following summer, that we could probably have a majority of all the, uh, work completed in a year.
To warrant a bond article, we would have to have it on the warrant by January tenth, eleventh, twelfth, fifteenth, somewhere in that ballpark, right? So you've got a ninety-day window in which we're saying we want to generate an RFP for six million dollars worth of projects that are very diverse, and get that information back, assess it. I would just say that's a pretty aggressive timeline.
Do we need the RFP before the bond, though? I don't think so. I think they can vote on the bond and get the RFP after we get approved.
I think, yeah, I, I would agree with that. I'm thinking more in order to get hard numbers to put into the bond, I think we'd have to necessarily do an RFP. Thank you for correcting me. But we would have to get, um, good estimates in from two or three different sources so that we can, we could really go forward with it now. I, I think it's a great idea, and it'd be wonderful to get it out there and do that this year. I just, I just want the board to understand that's a pretty aggressive timeline in the middle of budgeting. Yeah, I just, you know, he told me to say that tonight, so. No, he didn't. No, he didn't have any conversation about this. But I always believe in throwing the BA under the bus.
That's the number on the matrix that, and I guess Cory, if you could supply the board with the matrix, I guess, you'll, you'll, he has it broken down by schools, and by.
Projects?
Projects, one, two, and three, with one being most important, then two, and then three.
But that number's not strong enough to go get a warrant off of, don't you think?
Well, the, the numbers are.
There's certain things that if you, if you were to fix one thing, another item on the list is automatically fixed, so you wouldn't necessarily have to do the whole thing. And I think Dave Ross had mentioned too, during the meeting and also afterwards too, that there were some things that were classified on there as threes, just maintenance that, in his eyes, as the maintenance, or the facilities manager here, wouldn't view them necessarily as a three. He would see them more as a, so I think there needs to be a little bit of.
So there's a little bit of work, and I think you guys were, were working, doing that.
Are we, are we being short-sighted, like Liz suggested, sinking money and Band-Aids into GMS, when down the line, I'm hoping, um, I mean, it was the consensus ten years ago that we needed a new elementary school, and it hasn't gotten any younger. And we have been Band-Aiding since.
Well, we, we have, we have put a lot of money into GMS.
Yeah.
In the sense that we, we're, we're fixing the problems in GMS, because the, um, and you're not going to get the town to vote for a new elementary school today.
No, I agree with that.
With enrollments going in the other direction. So you've got to look at making GMS whole for the next ten or fifteen years.
I don't think ten or fifteen, no.
Well, at least for the next, at least for the next several years. I mean, part of it's taking care of the water issue at GMS, and part of it's taking care of ventilation and sprinkler systems.
So this fixes all of that and our space needs?
Well, if you put in, we were talking about.
Doesn't fix the space needs. It doesn't include the nineteen thirties building.
No, nineteen thirties building.
Well, let's not talk about that, because when we said that the school board had recommended to, that that building should maybe be at end of life, we were counseled that we should at least allow the building committee to have an input on that, so.
Oh, I know. I just don't, I don't know. I feel like we, like you said, we've put a lot of money into GMS. We still have all these problems. I, you know, I would.
But we haven't, we're, everything we're fixing is slowing any problem issues down, and I mean, and when we put in the HVAC systems, with the humidifier, dehumidifier and stuff like that, we should begin to see the change. And, and a lot of the money on that matrix was for GMS.
Right.
I mean, like three, three million dollars was GMS, so.
Then why wouldn't we try to be more aggressive in getting a new building, rather than sinking more money into fixing one that we need to replace anyway?
Close down a section and put more portables out in the driveway.
I just.
Because they'd be clean and new and fresh.
I, I know that this has been the debate for the past ten years, and we tried, and we tried, and we tried, and the feeling is that we're never, ever going to get a new elementary school. But I, I really truly believe that the demographic in our town has changed, and I think we're, we have a much broader base of voters who are school positive. We have younger families coming in. I think we can get it done if we're smart about it. And, and, and I'm not saying we need a pie in the sky, huge, multi, you know, multi-million dollar complex. We just need something better than what we have now.
I agree with you to a degree. At the same time, then the public's going to be looking at declining enrollment, and it's kind of tough to sell a school, a new school, when you have declining enrollment. So I think until you start seeing enough swing in enrollment, that you're not going, because of anything, the public's going to look at it like, listen, you don't need another school. What you're going to do is you're going to consolidate two into three, or three into two.
We could use a smaller school that isn't falling down.
GMS is fine, I don't know.
No, I, I'm exaggerating. I'm exaggerating, but.
But I think with the repairs that are on this report, and it's not to say that they'll all be approved, I, I think that it'll bring GMS up to a much better standard in quality.
And, and I, I do understa-, I mean, you know, I, I think that at some point in time, we will need to undertake a study of what needs to occur, where the old GMS is, what, what can be done if that's removed, and what, I mean, we didn't really, we don't even know what happens when you remove that, what's behind it. You know, what, what part of the school it, you know, it butts up to and what, what it would create. But, you know, there's probably that conversation to, to, to have. I mean, and the other question would be if, if you're, if you look to go do a new school, do you, you know, do you do a K through eight? Because relatively speaking, you can do, you can do a K through eight, probably the same price you could do a K through five.
I don't even like the fifth graders with the eighth graders.
Right. I, I think there are different options, different ways to look at it, um, but I feel like for the past ten years, we've been following this path, and unless we decide to take a different path, I, I don't feel like we're ever going to get there. We're just going to keep putting it off and.
Well, we've never done, um, a major upgrade in GMS in the eight years I've been here. We've, we've done twenty-five thousand dollars a year in the budget for windows, ba-, maybe an upgrade to a bathroom, but we've never undertaken a major overhaul of GMS.
Is it going to give more space, or is it an overhaul to the heating system?
It's, it's an overhaul of, of the, um, life safety. It's an overhaul of the heating and air conditioning. It's a, um, it's a process of, of upgrading the, the infrastructure and the working mechanisms of the building. But it's not adding classrooms and it, because, you know, that's not what the study was that we asked for. And if we wanted to look at, um, adding on to GMS, I mean, that's really the only option you have, is adding on to GMS.
Or portable cla-, modular classrooms.
What, what might be interesting for the board to do is to go out and visit some, uh, new elementary schools. The one in Concord, I understand, is excellent, and it's not a real, uh, over-the-top kind of cost item. I would suggest you go out and visit some new elementary schools and see what a new elementary school building looks like, what the learning spaces look like, how do they, uh, design it and build it very differently from a school that's been around for a long time. And I think that would inform you, first of all, as to, uh, what your impression of our school is, and does it meet the standards of a new school? And then secondly, if it's a major overhaul, where do you want to wind up at the end of it? What's your vision for a new elementary school? So certainly, if you're interested in that, we could arrange for some visits, um, and you could, uh, we could take a, you know, take the whole board and go visit something, and it might really be informative to you. Then you could make a much better decision, I think, about where we are and what you want to have.
Well, I understand upgrades at here and at LMS because they're newer schools. I just think, keep throwing money at GMS. And we're spending all this money for portables and, I don't know.
Right. The thing, the thing about the space needs at GMS is, you know, we have declining enrollment, which is fine, but it's not necessarily the number of classrooms that we need. I mean, we need classrooms, but a lot of the classrooms are used now for interventionists and special educators and tutoring and, you know, unified arts. We have a computer lab. So it's not set up, you know, however many years ago, it was fine, because we didn't have all those things or as many of those things, but now we do, so that room is taken up. You know, we have, we have enrichment and ESOL tutoring kids in closets, and, you know, it's.
I don't even think it's a stone.
The other piece I would keep in mind is that we do have, with our full-day kindergarten proposal, six portable classrooms. And they're not inside of the building. They're going to be outside the building. And certainly, the most desirable classrooms are classrooms that are inside a building with full access to all of the building's amenities. So, I mean, I do think that, that even if that population stays the same, uh, over the next five, six, seven, eight years, you're going to still have to deal with the fact, you've still got six classrooms that are not part of the main structure. So, I mean, I, I think it's worth looking at some other districts, some other really interesting new elementary schools. And they're going to be very, going to be very different from what we have, because ours has just been a constant growth. And then I think you can make a better decision about where you want to go, once you have that vision.
How much did the new school in Concord cost? Do you have any idea?
I can find that out. I don't have the number off the top of my head. I just know it was reasonable.
Forty-five million for the three. They did three schools at the same time.
So fifteen million each.
There's economies of scale. And they also had building aid at that point. They were still within.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the other point too, isn't it?
I mean, I'm not all bells and whistles, and I don't want carpeting, and every room has a bathroom. I just want a structure that's safe, pushed back from the road, all the kids are inside. I'm, I'm seri-, I'm not against linoleum floors or anything. Personally, when I came to this town, I'm like, that school is such a nice, oh, we have two beautiful schools pushed in the woods, and that school turns people off when they come into this town.
That site too offers you some significant problems with regards to the water table. I mean, Ed Murdo, when he visited there in two thousand and ten, had written a document that stated that you would have to spend a significant amount of money for water removal from the building, and, um, even then, he wasn't sure if that was what you were looking, when you were looking to build, he wasn't sure that was passed a state approval. So I, I think that that site itself may create some problems for you in terms of putting something right where it already is. Now, you own the land up, as it goes up towards the middle school, and it might be that you'd want to re-site the whole building.
Where, where's the new one going to go, do you remember? Between the, um.
Between LMS and the.
Where the baseball field is? And the middle, and then the middle school between up in that area.
A lot of the, you know, we still have the documentation and the legwork that was done ten years ago. We, I mean, we're willing to pull it all out and go through it and revise and, you know, get something that's palatable to the voters, I think.
You should throw a poll out there on Facebook, see how many people.
I'm happy to do it.
Well, I mean.
You did it about kindergarten. Did you see that one?
Michelle, can you pull the documents for that?
When do you want them by?
Saturday, please.
But I mean, I mean, I, you know, I mean, if you're going to do it, you might, you gotta, you know, we need to get it out and get it into the building committee's hands.
See what I have available on my.
But you don't have to do it, let's say, you don't have to do it by the twenty, you don't have to do it by next week. Let's not do it for next meeting, but we could, we could schedule some other meetings.
You're thirty-six.
A year, a couple of cycles away from being there. It seems to me you've got a huge community education program to do before you can move forward.
But I'd rather have it be looking at the five to seven-year scale than the ten to fifteen-year scale.
Regardless, if you're looking like five years out and saying, okay, we can get a new school in, there are still some things on this report that need to be done, need to be addressed, and need to be taken care of. And some of those will still be at, at GMS, because no matter how you want to look at it, if you're going to boil it, it's like ready to go. I mean, now's the time.
Life safety issues.
Yeah, I mean, you.
Right, right.
You can always transfer that to another school.
But if we look at it through a different lens, through a different, you know, we'll fix what we can now, but this is the end goal. Maybe we can cut down that bond a little bit more.
That would be a hundred thousand dollars a year right there.
That's a drop in the bucket on a fifteen-man downed building.
I said a hundred thousand dollars a year on portables is what we could possibly be spending.
See, the, the key is that, see, the other thing you can look at.
Not just a hundred thousand dollars a year on portables.
You can build on that side of the building, you know, with the offices.
Yeah, but that'd be buying them outright one time when you're done.
We can build there. Now, building there.
Right now, you're paying thirty-six thousand dollars a year to.
Well, I thought they said you couldn't build anymore on that site because the septic and the water table or something couldn't handle at GMS.
We, we can build on that site. We had, we can build on that site. I mean, and, and I believe that, I believe that in cleaning out some of the swales and some of the issues between where the soccer field and GMS was and all that, I see that it's grown back, but in cleaning all that, it began to solve some of the water issues at GMS. I, I believe that was my understanding, and keeping everything that, it, it worked. It, it helped solve some of the, so it didn't softball, but it, it began pulling water away from the school. And, um, uh, in, in that, but, um, you know, the, putting in a full system of humidifiers and dehumidifiers and HVAC is.
Is that in there? Will that solve the moisture problem?
It has like two point.
Yes.
It's two million dollars. It'll, better, better solve a lot of problems, yeah.
Right, that's what I meant. The slippery floors when it's humid outside? Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, John. So that'll bring us to old unfinished business now with policies. Our first one is IJOC.
The volunteer policy, we've had a lively debate internally, and, um, council has advised us that, we really need to have a policy that would create designated volunteers for any kind of a, an overnight trip, and then for any time that you would not have direct supervision by teachers, such as if students who are in the hallway are going from one place to another with a volunteer, you would have to have that as a designated volunteer, but that most of the other volunteers, or student volunteers that we use, would not have to be designated. I just remind us that designated volunteers means volunteers who have to go through the Cory check and then get approved to be in the district. So I think the policy reflects, uh, the best information that we can get from council regarding where the cutoff points are for having, have designated versus non-designated volunteers.
Making motion approve IJOC.
Give a second for discussion. I'll, I'll second for discussion. My question is, in reading it, do we have high school students right now that are designated volunteers?
No, we do not. We do have high school students who are going to be working with, um, elementary students, uh, in, with a teacher present and working with them, but they're not designated volunteers.
Right, in reading the recap from the attorneys, they were talking about designated and, and, I, I didn't think we used high school students as designated volunteers. I know we use them as volunteers.
We don't use them as designated volunteers.
So if, my understanding there is that these students are doing this sophomore, senior projects, or, um, they're doing it because their career path is, is different, so they're almost like doing it. So why are we, why? So, why are we, why are we not making them, I don't know what the right word is, why are we not making them a district volunteer, why are designated, why are we, why would we make them only a volunteer where they, because inevitably, they're going to be in a position, a teacher steps out of the room for whatever reason, a child needs to go to the bathroom for whatever, inevitably, I mean, it's so rigid that they are saying this can't occur and that is, that we know it's going to occur.
You probably can't run a background check on a high school kid.
Sure.
If it isn't anything, the legal counsel's supposed to, then then you find out.
But even if they're under eighteen, they're not going to get any information right.
Devulgeable, if that's a word.
That's true.
It should be.
Unless they're eighteen or... I made that up.
But my, but, you know...
The key term I read in legal counsel's interpretation was regular. So, if they're regular, it's going to be an ongoing thing where students are going to be with a volunteer without any other teacher or professional being there, then they become designated volunteers or clearly if they go overnight someplace because of all the things that they're designated volunteers.
They use the example too, like doing study outside in the hallway because then you would be a designated because you are, you know, one-on-one.
There are no student volunteers that are used during the school day.
No, I know, but I'm saying that was one of the examples that was used.
But if that were to happen, they would have to be designated volunteers, but we don't use this, this is after school.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought this was during school day.
No, this is after school and we went through a very, to use one of John's favorite words, rigorous, review of the student volunteer procedure between Bill and Scott and I and Mr. O'Neil.
Okay, so, thank you for that clarification. So, if it's a program run at GMS by an outside organization, why do we care? Why don't we just tell the organization? Why are we making rules for students that are working for an organization we don't control?
Well, the students, well, the, well, okay. The organization uses volunteers to be in front of the kids after school. They have to be background checked.
Mm-hmm.
They have to be.
This is school activities for this policy.
No, this policy's for the frontiers program.
Which is...
No, it's not only for the frontiers program.
That's just an example.
Oh, that's just an example?
It's just an example.
They want to use, they want to use students.
This all came about, the student volunteers piece, all came about because of that.
Like DI was the same way. You could have volunteers, but if they were not adults, an adult had to be there. That's DI's...
Somebody that's eighteen or older.
If they're eighteen or older, they'll be background checked.
Right, oh, all right, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion? All those in favor accept the policy IJOC, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is this coming back for another reading or is this...
If you wanted to.
Final, is this a second reading?
What reading is this?
This, well, the board approved it the last time, but then it went through more changes. So, that would have been a first reading. If you'd like it to come back, we can certainly do that.
Yes.
So, you want to re-improve it?
Yes, because I just would like to read, because I'm reading this now a little different than how I looked at it before. And I don't want to vote no.
Can I defer to the board chair for the board chair's decision regarding this?
Again, it's minor changes and like I said, I put the vote out there. You can vote no if you want, John.
I will because I'm just not ready to vote yes.
So, votes four, one, zero. So, our next policy is IKF, graduation requirements.
Yeah, the major change in this policy is that in the policy, it references a committee, let me read it. It references in very limited situations, geometry graduation requirement may be waived for students with unusual circumstances, waivers must be approved by the graduation requirement waiver team, which includes the principal school, council assistant principal math teacher, and director of special services. What I heard in the earlier discussion is that we should put and brought before the board or and approved by the board and then I think it would conform to what I've heard the dialogue at this cable in the last couple of weeks.
What, which paragraph is that?
In the high school graduation requirements, we had brought that before you. We've had discussions about this and then specifically, the discussion focused on geometry and then italicized words like towards the bottom third, in very limited situations, the geometry graduation requirement may be waived for students with unusual circumstances. That was what we talked about this evening. But in this evening's discussion, what I heard was that the board still wants to have the opportunity to vote on it and so that we would have to add, and then the waiver request would be brought before the board.
I just don't see that content you're mentioning.
Don't tell me that link broke.
What do you have?
Do you have it in front of you?
I just have a hard copy.
Do you guys see it?
You don't have it?
No.
Then we will table this until next week.
And I thought you just talked about, you were going to put it in for us for the next time. I didn't realize you already had it.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll table this, we'll bring it back to you next time. We'll have the appropriate language regarding the board's approval.
I was doing the same thing, Derek. I thought he was saying, okay, we'll bring it back and it's going to be in there.
It's right in my computer.
Is there any other language that we want to see in there or is that good enough? Does anyone have anything different?
I think we were pretty...
I think that covers it.
Yeah, for what we discussed in non-public.
Our next policy is IMDA, which is school ceremonies, observations, and patriotic exercises.
That was a policy which you had requested additional information on and we supplied that to you and that's strictly up to the board to have a dialogue as to what you'd like to do with this. This, my understanding, this policy has been the policy of the district for a number of years and it hasn't had any major changes over the years, but certainly, this is, as always, policy is up to you to decide.
Number five, none of our schools have the New Hampshire state flag flying. They don't. Oh, the New Hampshire state flag? That's what it says, the United States of New Hampshire.
We're violating the policy.
We have to get them.
We have to get them.
Actually, I thought, I thought we had one that said two flags.
Who? We're not sure.
I know CHS doesn't.
We'll make sure we get them.
None of them do. I'm a big flag fan.
You must be boycotting the NFL to be there.
No, I'm not. But they'll lit up if they're out, I hope.
I'll make a motion to accept policy IMDA.
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here for that discussion.
And we'll make sure we get the flags.
Now we have to. That's it? We have to now.
Right. I believe we have one more, which is IMDA, public statement and...
Oh, no, that was the, that's just for your information.
Clarification of the questions you had last week regarding IMDA.
Yeah.
All right.
This is that, oh.
It's actually some pretty interesting information.
Did you make, did you make any changes that were presented last week? This is Mrs. Gandia. No, I did not make any changes that were suggested.
We brought back the policy as it has been approved.
Any questions on the manifest? Do we have three signatures? That'll bring us to public input. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So made. We'll see everybody at eight AM Saturday, same place, same location.
Yeah, same one.
Have a fun day, folks.